These ones are in my car for a minute.
You guys remember that Chuck Deaver was a state like he went across the gym?
I know that man.
Yeah, I forgot about it.
Now you forgot your camera.
Yeah, him and Bernie Longen.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, they were both kids, they were only kids in my little corner of the city.
No.
Charlie was two years younger than Bernie was my age.
Yeah, I just seen it.
Died in a park failure.
Longen, yeah, I didn't know that either.
Was it a couple days ago, wasn't it?
Well, I caught it yesterday.
And with Chuck, I talked to him on the fourteenth, he called me. And.
Always Charlie.
He called me and he went on the eighteen.
Another gun.
Yeah, okay.
I was calling you today.
No, don't call me. Thanks for coming, everybody. We need to order a pledge of allegiance to the person who approved the initiative on the eleventh and eighth. September eleventh and January. Second. First, second. Any discussion on the minutes from one of those two dates? Discussion, any discussion in favor? Say an aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Did we get the financials?
I think so.
Okay. We need approval for the financials and the budgeting.
So moved.
Second. Barry. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say a cuss, say an aye.
Aye.
Close. Oh, wait a minute, sorry. Donny.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Gil.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Milo.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, move here. Okay. All right, that takes us. The visitors, Steve Holzer.
Yes, sir.
Gary, you're up.
I had a couple of questions come up, oh, since the spring, I guess. What I'm had to do with going back to the stop sign issue that was out there? That was supposed to have been taken under advisement. Uh, did it get thrown out, forgot the motor drop? It's solved. Just a question I have. The former mayor said he was gonna take it under advisement. Question at that time was, did we need all this stop signs? I don't remember what the rest of the details were. I'm just wondering if he's cleared the tables off.
I don't remember discussing it. So without your questions. And I did not bring you here to.
What's that?
I did not bring you here to. But is there a specific stop sign if you want to talk to the?
No, I'm not talking anything in specific because it was brought up. It was never completed, finished, closed or anything. But there's still too many signs out there. That was it. I was just trying to help and get it cleared if it's still on the end of that. Got something many sighted on it. It was going to be, I thought, this was a long time ago, that was the spring. I thought somebody was actually gonna check with, uh, probably Chief Bonds to see what he thought about the signs at that time. But I don't remember any real details other than just to let it get cleared.
I remember that was talked about, but yeah. I'm sorry.
That's it. That's all I had for that, but I had a couple of, I got one more. It's gotten to be, uh, I noticed through deer hunting this year when I was out in the country. There's trash laying all over the place. And I was brought up with the garbage, uh, outfit changed. What are we gonna do with all this extra trash? Well, that was former mayor. And I said, we're gonna find appliances all over the place. Oh, that'll never happen. I've seen six dump sites. Some of them may be farmers that I didn't recognize as being a farmer home. But there's trash laying all over the place. Appliances, whatnot. I guess my suggestion would be, my wife and I, we're junksters, thrifters, whatever. We've been in Carrington, we've been in Chancown, Fargo, Bismarck. They all have like a free day. All your big merchandise or your big appliances, sofas, whatever. You pile them on the street, the city picks them up. Far as I know, there's no additional charge, but it's once, twice a year. So just gonna bring that up and see if that's something.
Yeah.
Yeah. And yeah.
Spring and fall, it was definitely.
No.
I thought so.
Only once, maybe in the spring. We, we've just entered, or you know, here and there. But Bismarck is no longer doing it.
Okay. So. This is an act.
Just a new, I mean, a new thing. They've cut out doing it and they did it in the fall. So they're done.
Well, that's one out of six that I hate, but I hope you're still doing it.
I just know about Bismarck, I can answer it because.
I mean, because we don't, we're kinda stuck right now. If you have anything to throw out, you're stuck. I mean, the trailer only holds so much, you guys are doing a great job of keeping it empty. I've noticed the wood pile, all that lumber, that's not supposed to be getting there. Guess it'd be a pretty big pile and I'm gonna lose that.
Yeah.
So that's everything I got under trash.
People don't stuff where they shouldn't be throwing away. And we're just, we're talking, is that something else we're talking? Maybe we need to get another lane back there because it's coming in dark and whatever, people on camera.
Right, well.
Or get some type of light or motion.
There was a camera up there at one time, but I think I called you a camera.
It was dark and you couldn't read the license plate either on the name. Tried to, you couldn't read it, but.
And there's trees being all in from out of town too, I don't know if they're paid for or not.
Oh.
I don't wanna lose it. We lost the garbage that we used to have, I don't wanna lose any more of it.
Are we not able to do a, uh, to go out there once or twice a year to haul up?
We, we don't have, if you haul the trash to the landfill?
Like, yeah, like the plant, I mean, it's the big stuff. We don't, we, nobody can haul that away for us or?
No, I mean, the appliances you still can. You can still take appliances out. Or you can actually take them behind the city shop. We have a trailer, a metal trailer, or any kind of metal you can put in there. And we have a scrapper that comes in the fall typically and scraps all that out for us. But trash, we only have a transfer station. So then we would have to pay waste management to come out. Pay it out and take it away. And what was a, about thirty-two hundred dollars for a tank really by the time they dump it? They pick it up and bring it.
What do these people?
Oh, without having an option, we're taking, providing it off the country. Laying in the ditches, laying in the rock.
They come and.
They don't look for an option.
Right, but are those, I mean?
Appliances, tires, uh, rims, washers and dryers, stove, sinks, fence posts. I mean, stuff that could go into the scrap pile.
Yeah.
They're bypassing it. That, yeah.
So you do have a vat that a scrapper comes in.
He cleans up all of that.
But again.
But I mean, you said behind the shop.
There's a trailer that you could, like, if you had a washing machine that you wanted to get rid of.
Mm-hmm.
I think it says metal only.
Yep.
On the trailer, a dump trailer, a black dump trailer, and you could put a washer.
Right on the east side.
And, and this person will come and get it?
No. We take it to the landfill and once a year they'll come out and scrounge the whole pile.
Well, there's a great big pile. They crush all of it.
We did have a guy a while back that worked over there. Cause you know, I had two, two of my auction buddies were divers. So every once in a while I was with them when they had to stop and it was kinda funny watching them. Cut cords and so on and so forth.
I, I have a question. So do you think it's because people just don't know?
That's what I, yeah, cause I didn't.
So, so like what I'm wondering is. You know, I mean, cause I feel like even now people will call me at the office and say, I have a mattress, what do I do with it? But I, I don't know if there's just a large group of people out there that don't know that they can still call the city to get rid of it. And that's why we're seeing more people just going out and dumping it, whatever.
I think that's a big part of it.
And we don't know if these people are in the city people that are dumping this trash or are they?
Correct.
Are they?
I, I do not know, but it's increased after we lost the service.
Yeah, I know my, you know, a little bit out here, just the other side of the loon. Never saw anything. And now there's trash in that road all the time because it's easy for people to. I try to throw stuff or stop real quick, look, throw into the ditch. There's, uh, just that little area I saw, but I was like, whoa, where's this coming?
Or even like, I don't know, do we put a sign over by the city shop saying?
The only people seeing that are gonna drive by it.
To disclose the big ideas, please call the city office. I, I just, I don't know how to get the word out there. To that, there is still avenues for you to get rid of this stuff. And the avenues are no different than they used to be. I mean, not really, the, the prices are pretty much the same. They run up, you know, five dollars an item.
We could get a sign, we use the city, uh, Facebook, page.
But now, you know, instead of take hauling it out to the landfill yourselves, you just call me and I have Raymond come pick it up. I mean, it's pretty simple.
Wasn't that on a newsletter that came with the trash when this all started?
Who, I mean, who, how many people actually?
People don't read.
Well, you get that.
It was sent out to everybody.
Yeah.
So I don't know.
I mean, that came out and.
I remember reading it.
Yeah.
You guys' questions, right?
Yes. You answered me, I answered.
Cause I know they left a number to call that guy. And I had to call them and ask some questions, well, there was no secret. I was, I'm a hundred percent for the garbage crews. I was never ever for bringing them onto the street. Then that's still a thorn in the knee. And it's got, it's not, it's gotta be hard for the city crew line. To me, it looks terrible, but. They sit all day. Who's gonna write the article?
I don't know.
Right there. I got it right there, Joe.
I can all type on Facebook.
And you will?
Yeah.
Talk about the stop sign. I did talk to the chief and I did talk to him about back and then when things quiet down here, hopefully, we're just gonna take a little drive around down and bring it to the board and what we think.
Just kind of get it fresh.
We did talk, but we're letting things.
Thank you.
Good. All right, thanks, we have a question. JDA.
Yes, sir. All right, mayor told me explicitly, I gotta keep, keep it brief and.
Terms that we can all understand.
Yeah, I'm, I'm the son of two BS, what can I say, right? So I got a couple highlights in my reports included. It's been a pretty hectic month, especially with like the legislature going on. But a couple of big things to kinda highlight on is that we have a new housing development that's seemingly pretty promised out in the ballpark lot. So what I'm doing is trying to put together some different things that the state has to offer to try to, to, to kick the project along a little bit. It's looking like a fourplex, the plans look really, really nice. Uh, I think that if it were to move forward, it would be something that flies off the shelves frankly. So there's a couple of different tools that I'm looking at using to help with the project. There's, uh, Bank of North Dakota Arish Fund that I've mentioned briefly, but you have to show growth within your community, either with a new business or an existing business expanding. And I think what, how many, and the position amount has to be at least ten. So with the amount that the hospital is hiring currently, I believe that exceeds that. So I'm wondering if utilize that to maybe, uh, work that program. But then also the new home fund, uh, program that the governor is, is proposing that I'll touch on a little bit here too. Had some more traffic too, I kinda have some, the three different clients that I've been kinda working with here. A lot of times I try to abstain from names, some people try, uh, like to usually, uh, keep the names out of until something kinda materializes. So I just try to keep it a little confidential there, but there's some, some decent traffic. Uh, another thing was, uh, there is a new proposed WBI pipeline development, a west to east pipeline for Bakka Natural Gas that's taking a route. That'll be slightly southern in Wells County. So taking a look at what type of large industrial anchor tenants can maybe get that line a little closer. The main deal with natural gas, remember, and this has always been kind of an ongoing bubble here at the city is that, uh, if we're gonna really wanna try to fill up our industrial part with really anything, uh, natural gas is always a requirement. You know, like residential stuff, I don't think, you know, there's not, that's, that's not really the big, big issue when it comes to natural gas sometimes, you know, it's these large, um, RFPs that come from the state of North Dakota. Virtually one hundred percent of them have natural gas capabilities as a requirement. So, um, if we're to be competitive as a city for any of those types of projects, something like that would need to be present. So if we wanted to land, you know, like, uh, multi-employment value on an agriculture type thing that could be facilitated in an area like this without natural gas, it's, they're, they're not coming here. It's just plain and simple. So that's, that's kinda one of the things that, um, is, is pertinent there. But that's, but these are really, really big projects that take a lot of time. So it, it, who knows when or will it would go forward anyways, but it's just a proposal, but. Uh, last thing, I just wanna touch on a couple of things in the legislature. So the housing proposal, there's a fifty million proposal for what's called the home fund, which will help subsidize infrastructure, um, with home development, whether it's single or multifamily. So that'd be like connections and even excavating and up to even pouring the concrete. So they're labeling infrastructure is very flexible. So we're thinking that a lot of these funds could be deployed e- even into a fashion of like ballpark where we have like the roads already done, et cetera. Childcare, I'm having a conversation tomorrow, I'm actually going there tomorrow. We're talking about, what we and Karen and our JDA members talk about is that, you know, childcare is hard to cash flow. But you don't wanna pass along the price to the consumer because it's also very expensive for the parent or the consumer. But even when you're collecting that revenue, when you have a building to heat and have the lights on and have employment, it's, it's not a lot of money to break even or to cash flow. So what we wanna propose, I think, is something like a stabilization trust fund when it comes to childcare. That would have some sort of transfer appropriation that could collect earnings over time and maybe even kind of revolve or work something like the Common Schools Trust Fund. But for some level of childcare to get this thing facilitated or working. You know, one of the things that the new Commerce Commissioner said that I wholeheartedly agree with is that North Dakota has too many programs with not enough just solutions to things. We fund a lot of pri- uh, pilot programs and different things to try to be creative. We put appropriations into them, but some of them don't materialize, some of them aren't effective or don't work for rural specifically. And it's just like, let's get to the meat and bones of what the problem is. We can't get childcare centers to cash flow. We need to get stabilization aid to them so they can cash flow without giving that burden on to the parents. It's a huge workforce issue. We have ten jobs for every three unemployed people in the state of North Dakota. Oftentimes barriers like childcare is a really, really big, uh, barrier to entry into the workforce for potential workers. But, um, Rural Community Catalyst Committee and Fund, this one is pretty cool. This is a thirty million dollar proposal to have a, uh, catalyst committee within the Department of Commerce to give out grant programs for community welding to, uh, cities with less than eighty-five hundred people. I get really excited about this because if we could have grant deployments for betterment type activities, you know, this is where wellness centers or recreational centers could come into play. Something that I've thought is really important for small towns. I always dub it as civic infrastructure. What are their, what are the things that are important to do in this town that would make me wanna live here besides my school and my job and homes to live in? You know, we want things for people to do. So I think that some of those things, uh, could be really, really neat, uh, especially for rural communities like us to remain competitive and try to attract people. And then lastly is, of course, the big hot button issue is the property tax relief. Just to give a little update, the one plan, the governor's plan, I think, is getting more traction. It was just moved to appropriations after going through the Finance and Tax Committee. This is to expand the primary residence credit by doing a couple of different things. Taking some money out of the general fund and some out of legacy fund earnings to increase that pri- uh, primary residence credit rate that was five hundred dollars. To expand that to one thousand four hundred and fifty dollars into this next biennium, which would be very significant for primary homeowners in this town. You know, I think that the average home may be, say, if we're at a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy thousand dollars of true and full value for a home here in Harvey. Your property tax bill's probably with specials in the realms of twenty-five hundred, probably more towards the three thousand dollar a year mark. This could cut that in half, that's significant. And the idea is to continue with, as the principle of the legacy fund continues to grow, is to divert more earnings, uh, more of the money from the legacy earnings, take it away from the general fund and keep increasing that credit over time on a pathway to zero. So the idea is with this plan over time to eventually get it to where primary residents, um, you don't pay any property tax at some point, uh, as, as legacy fund principal balances continue to grow. So it's pretty creative. Uh, there was some, uh, provisions on having property tax, um, caps at three percent for political subdivisions within the state. Think that was largely to feed and given more flexibility on that type of thing. I think there were some local control arguments there. But ultimately, um, you know, that's certainly the biggest hot button issue for probably any constituent or resident all throughout the North, uh, North Dakota's property taxes. Especially for places like Harvey too. So there is plans to get some pretty significant relief even in this next biennium and have it continue to, uh, to grow as the next bienniums come. So, uh, that one is being viewed pretty favorably right now from what I can say. But, uh, other than that, um, if anybody has any questions, like I said, I'm, I'm, I'm in Bismarck tomorrow having some conversations. So if there's anything that people want me to relay or advocate for, let them know, that's what I'm here for.
Do you have a question for us?
Yes, sir.
So you said something about finding solutions to some, not just giving ideas and working towards, but you need real solutions. And you said something about rec, why people would wanna come to Harvey?
Oh.
And what kind of rec are you talking about?
Well, you know, I think like one of the things that I think Harvey, uh, has a lacking in is, um, in other similar sized communities is like a full, like, I would say like a rec wellness center. Like where you have a full scale gym, a place to workout, you know, other facilities like, uh, that you can have birthday parties at, you know, I, I, it just, it can be.
You mean like a community center?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, really, that's what it would be, is like the community centers. But the thing is, there's a lot of like current programs, like whether it's through USDA for, they have community facilities grants. But if there's any use of recreational activities, the language they use, then you're not eligible for the grant. It's like, well, that doesn't make any sense. Like, a lot of community centers you would build would have a recreational capacity to some extent. And even like this with the basketball courts, this could be considered recreational to an extent. So I don't even know if we can get funds for this place with those types of guys. So it's like having funds available for those types of things, I think, is, is really important. And if we could get some dollars, especially to the rural places that have a lot less resources.
To back up on that, when you first started talking about, uh, didn't you say there was money or there could be monies available? If you, um, specify, uh, things that we need to improve on in Harvey to get people to come here? Is that what you meant or?
Well, what I guess what I meant is this, this, from what I can tell, is this Community Cattle's Committee, there would be a pool of thirty million dollars that would be put into this. And it would be, you could use it for really a pretty wide variety of things for communities of under eighty-five hundred people to do any sort of programming or investment that would better the community.
Well, that brings up the pool in mind out here.
Yes, certainly.
So if you put a non-built building over the top of that, that'd make it year-round usage, that might bring in.
I.
Is there any money for that?
I, I don't see at this point why money in that pool couldn't be utilized for that type of capacity.
Yeah.
I, and I've always been somebody to where I, I've always said, I know, uh, indoor pools are really expensive and everything too. But I've always said too, we live in a climate, I don't know why we wouldn't, why we'd have an outdoor pool where we could only use it two months out of the year. But an indoor pool would be a dream of mine, but that one's a harder one to get sold. But if, but this money, I think, would be available for projects like that. I don't know any specifics on like match requirements, et cetera, but it's pretty, uh.
That'd be a good place for a city community center, straight out there.
I think that would be cool.
About, do we have anything on the window graph or anything?
Oh, yeah, oh, great, yes, sorry. So the Energy Efficiency Block Grant, I did contact them the other day because with a lot of the federal fund freezes, I had questions because that's technically a DOE grant that's administered by the state. They don't have any halts on that, so the money's still available. What's happening right now is that because our ask was over fifty thousand dollars, we're requesting a full sixty-five to really do all the windows and the exterior walls for this side of the building and up to the police station area. Is that we have to have a energy efficiency savings analysis done by an engineer. So we have more engineer working, engineering working on that right now. I just got confirmation from Josh. Um, you, you know what's silly when even Josh, our engineer, said, well, I think it's really silly that we have to have an engineer do this. And I was like, well, it's just the rules they had, I guess.
You have to hold a match up to the window and it goes out.
But the, the narrative, the budget, all that is completed and was submitted, so we're just waiting on that analysis on what it would estimate.
Now, right?
Oh, yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, it's, it's currently in progress.
You have an aggressive guy that might wanna put apartments up, which is great. So hopefully we'll see how it play, how it plays out. I mean, he's committed to hopefully, yeah, go with it.
It'd be big, it's really needed.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, then, still the place report, John.
I'll a little bit talk to you guys. And I try to be as, um, I gotta be careful I say, a lot of these cases are ongoing right now, actually all of them are ongoing right now. But I wanna give a little reality to, uh, you guys. So I've been here about six months and it has been interesting ride so far. The word innovation would probably be the best word. As you look at the, uh, sheet for, just, let's go, let's go to this month, the largest past month. Closer service has gone up. And actually, January, we had the most arrests since I've been here. And then that kinda shows you on the page where I talk about the multiple arrests. Long story short, two people arrested this month. One person was arrested twice. One was a, um, both unrelated, but information came out that led to the second arrest, let's re-see the, the sex charges. We'll just call it, that's what it is, right? And then, then we got the burglary charge, which is from back in October, the spot they got charged out. We have been, trying to chew my words carefully here. The sex crimes guys are out of control in this town. I have multiple pending other cases right now. We're talking four or five times the average for a county size. I don't know what's going on, I can't put a finger on it and give you a true answer. We can speculate all day long, but that is a reality. These cases take up to two hundred hours to work. They, it's, it's innovated my life. But we're nailed. I will say that. We're getting good cases, we have a good state's attorney and I've won a lot of relationships over the year with BCI and the feds and their assisting as they can, so. All I know is I applied for a job here, I looked at the stats, you know, I had eight years left and here I am.
Sleepy little town.
Yeah, exactly. If this is something else, I think this is just gonna be a level. There's nothing, no one can do here. It's not a blaming thing or anything like that. But it is a little weird that August twelfth, all hell broke loose when I became your chief. Don't know what to say, we're gonna leave it at that, you know? Yeah, boy.
Well, we need a community center.
I mean, it's hard, it's hard guys, because you know, this is a really good town. I mean, the people have been nothing but support, you guys have been nothing but support, the city office has been nothing but support. There's not a negative word I can say. Everybody's been supportive. The town needs this, we need to clean up these issues. This is, this. This is, this, this can tear a community apart unchecked. And I don't know, watch my words again, we're taking care of it now, that's what we're doing. And people are feeling comfortable obviously coming forward because it's just one after another, it's like.
You know, are, are most, like, in, in all towns, are most crimes, like transplant people less than ten years in the community or?
Certain crimes, you can say yes to. These crimes statistically in my career have been people leveling their, burglar line, unfortunately. And you see the names, I feel depressed really, so I'm very transparent in what we're doing. You know, especially once an arrest is made and investigation is ongoing, I try to let the community know. So you guys know these people have been here a lot longer than I do.
And it's sad to see it's a black eye, we don't like to see.
It is, it is, you know.
I mean, I don't like any of it, I'm sure none of us do living in the town, but John very good, he's a lot of confession on these people, so, whatever. And it's been, it's an amazing gift that he does have. But he's been, he's worked beyond the call of duty and the hours, and I think we need to maybe give him more compensation. He's putting way more hours on, he should be at a forty-hour a week job or whatever, but I think that has to go up. Need to do what he's been doing in the hours. And he's a one-man apartment here for a long time, but now the stuff is just, you never, you don't get any days off, you know, just, just.
Well, I haven't gotten to that yet too, I just actually, we'll talk about the charges here in a few seconds here. I mean, you look at since twelve, eight, twelve, and I, I don't have the exact numbers, but this is more charges than probably ten years of Wells County added together. We've just done six months. Don't hold me to, you know, don't hold me to the number. But I have to research it, but I mean, I don't have time for research, this is incredible here.
Salary play, now with that, I want to go over time with the salary play, that's what I just, move it up.
But you mentioned a little bit ago about a black eye. Yeah, it is kind of a black eye. But with you bringing stuff to surface. Yeah, that's, that's just it.
You're right, but we never, we don't want to, I want this thing to roll.
Yeah, but a year from now. It's gonna help, because the word, you know, the word, we didn't have anything for how long that was consistent. And now, you know, once the word starts growing that, hey, they're, they're staffed again, maybe they find another town.
It's, it's, you know, like I said, the county comes over and these young kids, they look up to them, I've seen it, I mean, they just, they, they look for help from them, and a lot of times, I've seen it.
We got a good group of, in the county. They're really good, young people.
I told my dog later, but I, I really.
You been burning the midnight a while?
Yeah, I, I mean, guys, I, I'm hardly home, my wife thinks that I'm like that, being sheriff again. I mean, it's, it's not what I expected when I moved here. I mean, what's so, the average, what, almost two hundred hours of work hours, a hundred and fifty hours of on-call hours every month I've been doing, so. Barely get more than a day off a week, this week I won't have a day off at all. Just because with these cases, the amount of work that goes into it, and I can't go through detail here, but they want to stop my office, I will give you some details with it. But there's a lot, I'm constantly in Bismarck and places to orchestrate certain forensic things. It's, yeah, yeah, I was just talking to an ODCI agent today, and just, this is.
I want to count that.
This is a lot of work.
Well, don't burn yourselves out.
I'm trying not.
Proper thing to say here.
I'm glad I got the help I got, these two guys I brought in, and they, they're great helpers, they have. But it's still not, you know, four years and six years' experience, you know what I mean? And plus, there's regular things that have to be done, you know, we still have to take care of the community with the. The guy that comes in and complains about a car that's been stuck in the snow for a while and needs to get a ticket, it needs to be addressed, you can't ignore it, that's not right.
Appreciate that too.
We're trying to.
So when are the, when is it full staff?
I am full staff right now.
You are?
Yeah.
Except for Josh.
Yeah, once in school right now, so it's just Gabby and I right now. I mean, full staff is a key, where I can, I mean, real, but these numbers, I probably can justify a ten-man department right this second. Wouldn't be that forever?
No.
But right now, oh yeah. This, this is.
But Josh, will be done in the middle of May?
Beginning of May.
Beginning of May.
But I was gonna, I wasn't thinking I was gonna bring up, I, I originally was gonna ask for some of my comp hours to be paid or something, because it's not that, I gotta justify this a little bit too, you know, to myself, that this is part of my career and not seeing the family again. But it sounds like it was unelected, I'm not, sorry, unelected work, because I'm salaried, that's not a possibility, so, you know, it's just.
What was one of the stipulations or requirements when you, when you took office here? That, that we were expecting of you, can't remember, was it how many hours a month?
I mean, technically it's forty hours a week or eighty hours every two weeks. And then on-call time, we just absorb because that's just the way it is in law enforcement, you know, it's, that would be your average.
So you went from thinking about a hundred and sixty hours to two hundred and something plus another hundred and fifteen?
That's average, yeah. I think that's been every single month since I've been here.
Sound like an auctioneer.
Well, like December came around, like, oh great, things are getting better, all right, we're finally over that hump. And then January came and it was the worst yet. I mean, by the time I grew with me, I think at that point, I've been like, you know, guys, this is more than I can. Because I can't do a slack job, you know, it's just not who I am.
And typically, this is a slow time of year.
Thank you, you're absolutely correct. Statistically, in every, every law enforcement area, that is, yeah, that's, yeah.
Well, I think it deserves something, I really do.
What are we talking about here now, as far as, you're talking about wage?
Well, I would, I would like to, for the time, but that's not a possible thing. I guess it was brought up, but I was just wanting a bump in the salary. I was fine either way personally, that's what I was requesting.
Clean up our streets. You sheriff? We need a vestis.
But anyway.
Is that a committee? That's just it, we talked about the, in the, in the finance committee or where is that?
I mean, if you were to put it to a committee, it would be personal.
I'm just looking at this right here, since the eight, eight, well, four felony charges.
Four, four A felony, that's the same thing.
One B, ten C. Are, can I ask, are these all different people or?
No, the, some of, there's probably four major cases right now pending all those.
So that's four individuals?
Or individuals, but remember, every victim is a separate crime, you have to investigate separate, you can't treat them the same. So you treat it as a separate investigation? I mean, I was looking back, that, that nuts. Bet, I don't have any better words to say, I mean, that's extreme, you know, it's, it's extreme numbers, I don't care.
This can't be the norm.
No, I don't think it will be forever, no, I don't think it will be.
But I think he's gotta get comments in, guys, gee, man, we gotta have something. What's that?
That needs to be talked about.
Executive?
Yes. Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
I'll agree with that. You can go to executive.
We can get if we announce it correctly. I, I, I love, one moment, please?
Do it right, go back.
God, he's more than enough there.
Continue on to me and then I'll get this. Yes, I'll get it right, okay, we'll come back. Again, we'll take care of her later, this will probably work, okay? The generator in the coolie, uh, fire, electrical, burned up, so there's twelve thousand dollars of damage on it. We have it on getting insurance, and hopefully it's covered. But we almost should move forward and get okay if they don't take care of it, then we can roll and get it done. Because that takes care of the south side of town, the hill, and if that don't work, it's bad, you know?
How much was that repaired, do you remember?
Thirty-five, somewhere right here.
The one down, down there? Somewhere, maybe not quite thirty.
And that was picked up by the?
That, that was a. That was a, that was a FEMA grant. Yeah, yeah, FEMA did that for us.
How many years ago?
Twenty twenty, I can tell you that one hundred percent for sure, twenty twenty is when we got it, and I can tell you the cost of the roof.
It sounded like the starter or the charger for the battery, something in there, over even, caused it. Went into electrical and started taking on other stuff.
We do have insurance on it?
Yeah. Was there, there shouldn't be no reason why.
Should be a reason, there should.
Insurance should cover our generator, that, that bump blew up.
You didn't cover what?
That jetter.
But that wasn't a fixture or building like this is gonna. A jetter's a portable piece of equipment, this isn't, it's installed.
Yeah, hopefully they cover it. I would think so.
There's a fire number right before we do on the.
Regardless, we gotta get.
We got a good insurance, hopefully they should, we should cover that one, okay?
But, yeah, like you're saying.
I mean, get them all rolling.
Yeah. We know if they can do it quick, because that could, you know.
A lot of clients got the vessel, finish button, the valves in there, uh, top deck, that's done, so things are going good out there. Cylinder for blade, that one we paid, what do you say hundred for, or thirty-two right after those, the gate? We can rebuild it and mine it for five hundred and twenty, so.
But will they take it back? Will they take it though?
No.
We never ordered it?
Yeah, we haven't, but we took the one off and it wasn't cracked, so we can recondition it for five hundred. I think we should, that way we won't. And that way, if the other one goes bad, we can take it off right away before it gets damaged.
That's at the fluid tower?
That, not sure which, John took it down there and.
They're pretty cool. So moved.
I'll second it. All right, any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion, I'll pay the motion to the public, say aye.
Aye.
Full same sign. All right, we got a garbage truck, that buyer.
Really?
He's willing to give ninety-five, and he said, so he's checked out. John stopped in, mine it, that, that wall works, and they said ninety-five, ninety worth. But they said, that's what he's looking at.
It's in state?
We'd go buy it for ninety-five then.
Castleton.
Cooperstown.
Cooperstown?
Cooperstown. Last week called me, so I don't have it, but he saw, called me, I don't know why you have my number.
I'd make a motion that we accept the ninety-five thousand, I'll second that.
Any discussion? Well, I guess he's, he's definitely got money to pay, but that, but the other one, the guy's about, the guy's about, I said, I wanted ninety-five, and that was what, year, less than a month, something.
It was a little, about four miles.
Yeah, they want, whatever they know.
Yeah, this guy, he wants it for that.
Any more discussion?
Done with it.
Any discussion? Okay, I'll pay the motion, say a five, say a aye. Full same sign, hopefully it goes through, nice to get rid of it.
Yeah, he's talking good.
Be great to get rid of it, but I don't know, okay?
We got twenty-five thousand dollars of grant money for that generator, and that covered it all, because we didn't pay anything else in interstate.
For half of it. His FEMA's still the department anymore?
Well, I don't know that.
I think the motion has to be, it's like, get it rolling.
Get fixed in.
On the generator?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll get it going or whatever. Take a fix on the other.
I'd second that.
Okay, any, first and second, okay, any discussion? We'll have to deal with insurance if they don't come along with it. Any more discussion? Any more discussion, I'll pay the motion, say a five, say a aye. Full same sign, okay, get it going. Okay, we wanna just have them come and get it going and then.
The insurance play out.
We gotta have it, okay?
What's that?
Yes, you do know. Terry maybe picked up on it. It's twenty, it's twenty-five to shut it off and twenty-five to turn it back on. But, I mean, you know, you see all the city scan stuff, and I feel like everybody charges more than we do. And some people, I feel like, make these guys, you know, I mean, in the winter time, they have to clear snow to find the curb stops and, you know, they, they'll, they'll ask them to turn it off and then a week later have them turn it back on, and I just feel like that.
So this is for the ones that aren't paying their bill?
No, no.
Guys like me, people that don't live.
Guys like me.
It would be, it would be you.
Well, there should definitely be an extra charge if they gotta dig around and find it.
I mean, I. Don't look at me.
Got to be more if you gotta dig.
Yeah, we got a couple guys that every three months, you know, you know, they come back, you know? Probably have them, they gotta start paying fifty dollars every time.
So is that during the winter time too, you gotta dig it up, find it?
Yeah.
That needs to be extra, on top of the, yeah.
You know where mine is now?
Sure do. That's an easy shut off.
Well, we think twenty-five each way now, or we don't?
I'm gonna abstain from this.
Well, I think for one thing, it needs to be an additional charge if there's extra work involved, instead of just going up there. I don't think you have to do that on an hourly basis.
As long as you put some tape to, to shut it if there's no work.
If there's no work and we find it easy, it's in half an hour.
Well, that's a fifty bucks.
That's fifty bucks, yeah.
Oh, you got a couple guys going or?
And if we get snow removal and it's gonna get kinda ugly.
So maybe that needs to be open-ended thing, minimum charge.
A hundred dollars a year, Gab.
Down to three here in. Caps are frozen. Ice there, some around there.
Hundred dollars turn it on and off, if we had put it inside my building, I could turn it off.
Yeah, it, it sometimes gets to be a problem.
You may never touch your curse. Inside your own life, no. Guys, it's a trouble more than once.
You gotta shut them off all the time, you know, because they ain't paying.
If it's a shut off fee for not paying it, it's a hundred dollars.
Okay, okay, that's, that's.
That's already a hundred. That is already hundred.
I mean, are there a lot that go? Two weeks, turn it off, come back.
Maybe not two weeks, but maybe two months.
But why, why would you make an exception? Two weeks or three months?
It doesn't matter.
No, no, I'm just curious of, like, what the timeframe is where there's the most people wanting to turn it on and turn it off.
But I mean, if somebody come today and said, I need it turned off because I'm. And you're coming back in two weeks.
Well, there's no, no exception for dollars, why is that way?
Well. So I guess.
You know, if you don't pay your bill.
If you were still works, we would then not charge you for your water, which I think is why people shut them on and off. The other insurance for safety and they want to not have something freeze in their home, but, yeah, so then they don't pay water and they don't pay sewer. If they shut their water off. And then when they come back, they turn it back on, they pay the. So I mean, to.
I mean, I understand that turning it off in the winter time, if you're going south or whatever for the winter, I understand that. But if you're just turning it off so you don't have to, cause you're gonna be gone for two months and you don't wanna pay your water bill. That's bullshit, sorry.
Well, if everyone had a. You know, a shut off in their home.
Yeah. Well, what are your wishes? I mean, we got better things to do than turn these guys' water on and off home. Every time they, they pound for a couple months.
The twenty-five isn't enough.
No, the twenty-five's not enough, no, definitely.
Well, I think we should be open ended because there are some of them that are in the trucks, like if you gotta go down and one broke off or the sleeve is disjointed and.
That's true too.
Okay, so how about a fifty dollar minimum, hundred dollar maximum?
Well, you can't, I don't think you should put a maximum on it because if you gotta dig, if you gotta dig tobacco and dig it out.
Well, that's.
It's three thousand dollars.
That's different again.
Yeah, that would be on that.
That's different again. I don't care.
Minimum should be.
How come you got this with this? How much minimum is it about?
Well, if they have to spend extra time digging snow or whatever to do it, I mean, that should be a comment for it.
Yeah. It should be by the hour.
Yeah. So I don't know if we should have a maximum line because it could run into issues.
So, do you want to just continue with the fifty dollars after or fifty dollars for the initial?
Fifty initial, maybe a hundred dollars an hour for extra time, well, get your first half hour.
You said a half hour, you're more there in a half hour, charge you more, right, fifty dollar initial, you're more in a half hour.
Tell me some cases, you might have to bring a payroll number.
Oh, that's. Charge it by the hour, that's. It's a percent of fifty bucks, whatever, you gotta do the extra.
Like stop them from turning it off in the winter.
After half hour, do you wanna charge them an hour after half hour then, we can do that or whatever.
Well, we have some rates on all the equipment, but as far as your time and.
I mean, we need to probably, I mean, it's been ten years since we raised anything.
I think the last raises that are written in my book were in twenty eighteen.
All we did do is in eighteen.
Yeah, I'm not, over there, half hour, another trip, do you ever have one right there?
You've only got one guy that are doing it, that's why.
Yeah. Well, I don't think the people are turning the water off necessarily worried about saving thirty bucks, you know, let's see. What ifs? Right, and so. You know, they're turning the water off, they are saving thirty bucks, if you charge it fifty.
It's cheap, it sure.
It is. And it covers, I mean, everybody, everybody, everything's going up, but just the way it is.
I turn my valve off on my washer every week.
Yeah, what are your wishes, somebody wanna? Go with it?
Well. I suggest a fifty dollar minimum.
The motion, fifty dollar minimum.
Zenon, fifty dollars off?
Yeah.
Either way.
And if you're there for more than half hour or something, make it put that something about that.
Yeah.
Fifty more bucks per half an hour?
I don't know, if he comes and sits in my office for more than half hour.
I think you're saying more.
He's got six back here too.
So I put, uh, increase to fifty, if it's over a half hour, they get charged by the hour.
For that problem. Alright, got a motion, got a second.
I'll second that.
Second, any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion, all favor the motion, second five, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign, okay. Effective.
Soon as that comes down the paper, my lawyer's gonna hit.
Sorry, Bill. Anything else? I think I'm done.
We're gonna roll right into the NSFVs, because again, they're still twenty-five dollars.
No, our NSA, NSFV is only ten bucks.
Oh, ten bucks, we want to go to twenty-five, yeah.
For a bad check.
For a bad check.
Yeah, great.
That's pretty easy.
Yeah.
We have that on a motion.
Second. That guy on, okay, third piece, the twenty-five dollars or ten, okay? Any discussion?
Yeah, discussion is, we just moved this school to thirty-five. It's, it's amazing.
Is it?
It's amazing, yeah.
Yep.
And, and what do you charge?
I have, uh, they do it in Bismarck.
Oh.
I'd go to Bismarck, but the bank charges me seven dollars.
Oh, yeah, the return.
Just to do it.
I mean, that's the same, the return fees.
Ours goes to the sheriff and it's just about immediate refund. At an auction. At an auction. We turn it over to the sheriff. Then he, not the sheriff there now, but the one that I dealt with originally feared, but he says this is amazing, so they don't have the money until I'm standing over the end. Then they got the money.
What, um, what's, this is nothing, no fee, no fee.
Mike, what did you raise it from? What was it?
Uh, twenty.
So you went from twenty to thirty-five?
Well, I mean, if we get twenty-five, we can keep it in mind and in the air, so now we can add it, yeah.
Okay, any more discussion? Got a motion on the floor? Any more discussion? All favor the motion, second five, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign, twenty-five dollars, okay?
Okay, city lots is our next one. Um, we, we have two lots back on tax foreclosure. We have seven sixteen Custer Avenue across from the round, roundhouse. Um, or next to Buckwitz's.
Okay, I'm sure that's.
Um, that we tore that house down back in twenty twenty-one, I believe. Um, we spent fourteen thousand dollars tearing that house down. And then the other house that we got back is five twelve Brewster Street.
Which one?
Stacy Raykis. Uh, sixteen thousand eight hundred dollars to tear that house down. So I need to know a minimum bid that we're going to be placing these in the paper folder.
He has a fifteen hundred, he ordered it, yeah?
I thought so.
Um, we, we've done.
I don't know, that's what you did.
There've been, a few have been different, I guess.
A few were different, but, yep, fifteen hundred dollars is what we went with a minimum, a minimum bid, um.
We had to put some restrictions on something about building on or something too.
We have, um, and we have a few other lots as well that would still be, I mean, four oh one Burke Avenue, I think we still have, um, that's over on the north side, I think that was a Satner House, Dennis Satner's, four oh one. Um, five oh eight Burke, five thirteen Burke, one one six Sixth Street. Two twelve Clark.
These are all watching for passes.
Nope, these, these are, these are still available.
There was a minimum bid on that?
Uh, Clark was a dollar and everything else is fifteen hundred, so that's where I'm going. What, what are we, what are your wishes?
Minimum bid, what would you like on? Both them lots are pretty small, so it's gonna be tough.
These are, uh, fifty foot lot, fifty by one forty.
Pretty hard to build anything new on there. I, I wouldn't say more than fifteen, I would say fifteen hundred dollars.
You could build it. The Custer was in that garage on it.
You could build a house on it, you just are gonna have to be a little bit more creative, you're gonna have to be long and skinny. What? Yeah, well, there's lots of them all over town, so they used to do it.
Both of them have an alley, you remember?
Yeah.
Yes.
Brewster does, Custer, Custer does.
Custer.
No.
Is that a motion?
Yeah.
That's a motion.
Fifteen hundred?
That's all, that's all they're worth. Give a second, okay. Alright, any discussion, fifteen hundred minimum bid on it? Fifteen hundred minimum bid, okay.
Okay, my next question is, are we gonna, are we gonna, oh. I'm sorry.
Any more discussion? All favor the motion, second five, say aye, aye.
Aye.
All same sign, okay.
I'm so sorry.
Sure, go, yeah.
Are, are we still gonna do the same old sealed bid, you get one bid or you guys wanna do some different kind of process or what, what are your thoughts?
I would say if somebody comes in and wants to give you fifteen hundred dollars, you throw it to them and tell them. If you get more than one fifteen hundred bid, then they can know, you have the right to.
Then they can go up, I guess.
So if there would be a tie, you would allow them to have another.
Yeah.
So we're gonna do the same sealed bid that we've always done, if we had a tie, more than.
Okay.
Is there a, just first fifteen hundred that shows up, you get it?
No. So that's a sealed bid. When we're opening.
Time to open next meeting now, or you put it in the paper or open next meeting?
Yeah.
Alright. I'm good.
So they would be due in the office, um, yeah, I guess we give them the opportunity, if there's two people with the same fifteen hundred dollar bid, they would have an opportunity to raise it.
Is there gonna be a stipulation, they have to build something on it?
So, that's, that's your greatest.
Peter Jacksons.
Take over the specials, we don't have to do them anymore.
That's worth it right there.
Okay?
So you don't have to.
Anything from my reporting, so sorry. If you guys have a question on, I can answer it, anyways, we can move forward.
Still waiting, okay, we're moved.
If we've got any questions. We're still waiting for the place to?
Yeah, please do.
Um, but at least it's being covered for by grants, so yay.
Have some, uh, we had the finance committee meeting, whatever, so.
Yeah, the minutes are in, uh.
Loop to group, what's it? Second, Mary? Okay, any discussion? Discussion, any special here, we're calling it, we're good.
Yeah.
Really, okay, all favor the motion, second five, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign. Got some permits here for our local event permits from senior citizens, I'll take them on that time, we'll. If you want them all, we can put them all in the line.
All of them?
All of them, all of them.
Can I ask a question? What, what's the one with the eagles, what are they doing?
That's Rocky Mountain Elk Foundation, remember they, during their time, yeah, they do it every year, but they have to have their own separate site authorization.
Okay.
That'll be in March.
March fifteenth.
March fifteenth.
Somebody second that?
No, March fifteenth, okay? Alright, any discussion on those? Any discussion? Me and I agree with the motion. All favor the motion, second five, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign.
No, I think you did all of them. Yeah, we did all of them.
Well, that's right. Okay, we get the JDA, we get the finance, minutes, and. Anything else? Well, we have to. Okay.
When you heard the train whistle?
No.
Okay, that, uh, we're gonna move into executive session, so. According to legal authority in our federal standard code forty-four dash zero four dash one nine point two and forty-four dash zero four dash one nine point one to discuss the police department procedures, so. After, general public will have to leave it. I'll come back, I'll come back.
We're, we're done, and then what do you want to do with Cheryl's?
They can all, they can all take a walk.